Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Calavita, will you take the role, please?
Ms. Driver.
Here.
Ms. Genovasi.
Here.
Ms. Grillo.
Present.
Mr. Herbert.
Yeah.
Ms. Lindthorss.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Present.
Mr. Resnick. Mr. Swicki.
Here.
Mr. Resnick.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Name it.
All right, we do have a forum.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 5th, 2022. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Files. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. This meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, I don't know why that's here, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. We'll give you more instructions on that later. Will you please join me for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will begin, and I will request a motion that the Board approve the minutes from the following meetings, the regular enclosed minutes of November 14th, 2022.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Good evening, Angela. Would you like to provide us with a report this evening?
Yes.
Thank you.
I hope that everyone is doing well. There's a couple of exciting events that happened in our upcoming high school. Hopewell Valley Chambers honored our active dance, playing, and serve food at this magical dinner. You can also see the choir caroling at some other events in town. A lot of people are very excited about the start of winter sports. There will be many upcoming games and meets this week in swim, ice hockey, wrestling, and basketball games. This Friday, the Student Administrator Action Committee will be meeting with Miss Riley again to discuss ideas to improve student life at the high school. Right now, the high school and the student council are focusing their efforts on the winter pep rally. There are many fun activities that will be happening, including singing and dancing. The student officers of each class are preparing their choreography for this year's pep rally dance competition in order to claim the winning title. We will even have special parents from some faculty members who will be performing in the competition for first time. Personally, the class of 2023 has always been the best, but never won first place. Hopefully, this year, we will come up out top, which means that the other classes must bring their best dance moves if they want to show up winning. Because of the positive comments about the Student Appreciation Day, where we handed out free donuts after school, we plan on also handing out candy cans after the winter pep rally as another act of student appreciation. After the pep rally, members of the student council will be more involved with an upcoming club called the Democracy Club. This club, which originated from the ideas of Mr. Wilson and Mr. Parkinson, is hoping to spread the message of what democracy means and why it's important for students, teachers, parents, and other members of our community to understand why it helps us. Ways that we plan on recruiting members are to first reach out to class officers to hear opinions and feedback from each grade. We are hoping to find common issues and work all together to solve them efficiently. We are working to get the club started in January, and throughout the year, our club advisors hope to step back to observe and let the students know the club. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. I'm very excited to hear that the Democracy Club is moving forward, and I wish you all the best at that pep rally. I'm a little biased, but still wish you the best. Does anyone have any questions for Angela? Okay, then we'll say thank you so much for that report. I will provide a brief report this evening. It is with regret that I announce my decision to resign from the Board effective the end of this calendar year. This is not a decision that I came to lightly, but it is one that I make for both personal and professional reasons. It has been, truly been a privilege and a great honor to serve as a member of this Board, representing the citizens of Hopewell Township. Thank you for putting your trust in me. I feel grateful for the opportunity to serve this amazing district alongside some fantastic, dedicated fellow Board members, both past and present. This Board has served through some of the most challenging times in our history, to include a pandemic and through the hiring of a new superintendent. You will not find a more dedicated, respected group of public servants. I am proud of the work that we have done together. I thank you for putting your trust in me to serve as President of this body for the past three years. Even when we did not agree, we always acted with respect for one another, asking the difficult questions and collaborating to come to solutions to support student achievement and wellness. Having spent some time with our three newly elected Board members, Mr. Mike Wilt, Dr. Mike Moslin, Mark Geters, and Lydia Lu, I can honestly say that the future of the Board is bright. I'd like to thank the staff of the district for their efforts. In Hopewell, we are incredibly fortunate to be served by a top-notch administrative team led by the incredible Dr. Treese. Rosetta, it has been my true honor to serve with you and to watch you in action. You are a phenomenal leader, a woman of conviction and compassion, and you bring everything you have for this job on a daily basis. I have been so fortunate to work with you and feel privileged to also call you my friend. I'd be remiss if I did not mention Dr. Tom Smith as well, our former superintendent, a visionary leader who served this district admirably. Our administrators are some of the hardest-working, dedicated folks you will ever meet. They are bright, capable, and talented, and they truly inspire me on a daily basis with the work that they do to support our students and staff. We are fortunate to have a highly qualified, devoted, and caring staff of principals, supervisors, teachers, support staff, nurses, and so many others who I wish to thank for making the job of this Board much easier than it otherwise might be. I know I am neglecting to mention some important folks, and for this, I do apologize. Please know that it does take a village to serve this community, and I feel so fortunate to be a part of this one. And I intend to serve this district in other ways in the years to come. I'd also like to thank my family and friends for supporting me during these years as well, and, you know, thanks to all of you once more. Appreciate it. With that, we will move on. Actually, I went in the wrong order. I apologize. We have three other members who are cycling off this year, and we are very sad to see them go, but we want to thank them for all that they have done, as I said, to support this district through some of our most challenging times. They have each served admirably and have been dedicated and have been committee chairs and do a lot of work behind the scenes that no one ever sees, and we thank them for all of their efforts. First, we'll thank Bill Herbert. Bill, you have served as a Chair of Finance and Policy and served in other ways, and you've always asked the difficult questions when needed. I've really appreciated your intellect and your ability and your financial background and all that you have brought to this Board and your dedication to our students and to our staff, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. John Mason, the current Chair of our Community Relations Committee, also known as the One Who Forged the Mason Compromise, which we will never forget. John, I think that the thing I appreciate the most about you besides your dedication is the fact that you always speak your mind. You always speak with conviction and with heart, and you have served in many different ways, but I think that's the thing that we all appreciate, in addition to being the king of the snacks and the drinks at every meeting. So I don't know what we're gonna do. Someone is gonna have to fill that role. But, you know, you bring a lot of different expertise to this job, and again, you know, appreciated your ability to speak with honesty and integrity during these challenging years. I think it helped to elevate this Board to a different level, so thank you so much for your service. And last, but certainly not least, my partner in crime, my Vice President Jess Grillo. Jess, I really don't know at certain times what I would have done in this job without your support. I always knew that you were there to bounce ideas off of. You've served us in many different ways, most recently as the Chair of our Personnel Committee, and, you know, the background that you bring from the business world has been invaluable to this Board, in addition to just your common sense and, again, your sense of conviction and your honesty, and so we thank you for your efforts as well. We'll miss you. Dr. Treese, I think you had a few words that you wanted to share.
I did, and I was writing and writing my thoughts, you know, rewriting them, but I first want to thank Ms. Grillo, Mr. Mason, and Mr. Herbert for your, just your commitment to this position. I know how time-consuming it is, you're juggling children, full-time jobs, and you're bringing your business acumen, your knowledge, your sensibility, the voice of the community, honesty, the hard questions to this Board, to make sure that we're doing what's best for kids, and then ultimately saying, you know, if that's what's best for kids, we need to make that happen. So I've valued all of that, and I really was fortunate as a first-year superintendent to have such a strong, well-functioning, committed Board. And I certainly, when I started this job, and you all know I tell it like it is, and I want people to tell me like it is, and I appreciate you having your ear to the ground and telling me, this is what we're hearing, and what can we do better? How can we fix it? How can we make sure that everyone's voice is heard? Even the voices that we don't necessarily, like, we don't want to hear that right now. You're like, no, 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 we want to hear that. How can we make it better for everyone, and really challenging us to be our best selves? So I'm really happy about our new Board members, Lydia, Mike, and Mark coming on. I know that they have some great ideas, but they have some huge shoes to fill, so I want to thank you. And to Ms. Lindthorss, I could not have asked for a better Board President. Just, I don't know how you juggle all of it, just being a mom, shuttling children, not just your own children, running our food pantry or helping with the food pantry, helping us with the way we put out our communications, sitting on every committee and being present. Jess, we really could not have done this, the pandemic and all these things that we've had in the last three years without you, so you will be missed. And I know we're gonna have many of opportunities to celebrate you all, but I wanted to just take a few minutes to say that I'm grateful to have started my career with you all as a superintendent, and you've gotten me ready to do this job, so thank you. So I can transition to, so I know that we are all coming here on a December night, and December's busy, and I know our dance cards are very busy, especially our students and our student athletes. So we're gonna let you all go after this next piece, because I know that you have things to do as you come to the end of classes and semesters and all that before you go into winter break. So at this time, I would love to invite Coach Caldwell to the podium. He's going to introduce our champion, champion team. Now, we made it all the way to the championship. I'm so proud of you, undefeated. So impressed. But our athletes are just not spectacular athletes. They also give back to the community, and that's why we invited you here today.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and first and foremost, thank you for volunteering as well and giving your time to make our community better and our schools better. As a program, our mission statement is to develop and cultivate the growth of all of our young men, both athletically, academically, and morally, and a part of that is on the field and off the field. I'm super proud of these guys and the leadership they showed throughout the season. We finished 10-1, an undefeated regular season, ended up going to the sectional finals. What makes me even more proud is all the work that they do off the football field. All these guys take care of themselves in the classroom, all the great leaders in the community and great leaders in the hallways of our school. This season, for our homecoming game, we did, we raised, we did Home Goods for Homecoming, where we raised, we collected goods at the game, and we donated to the Chubbies Project and the Pennington Mobile Food Pantry. Towards the end of the season, we had a junior, Nate Tool, who created a competition, our offense versus defense, and see who could bring in the most canned goods, and they donated that, again, to the Chubbies Project. And I forget how long we've been doing our Pink Out game. It might go back to like 2010. We sell, excuse me, we sell Pink Out t-shirts, and every year, we donate $1,500 to Capital Health, the Capital Health Cancer Center. And we also, recent few years, last years, we also reach out to the guidance councils and figure out if there are any families in our community that have a family member struggling with cancer, and we end up delivering flowers and gift cards to that family around the holidays. And so that's, I think that's one of the great things we do, because it's a lot of times we do things, but we need to make that connection instead of just raising and giving money away. We try to make that connection. I think that was really important. Also, these guys volunteer at flag football games. Just a couple of weeks ago, they volunteered at the Police vs. Fire flag football game over at the high school. But like I said, I think it's important that these guys not only give great effort on the football field, but I think they, you know, they give good effort in the community too, and always give back and realize how fortunate they are. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that their parents, it is, truly is a team effort, and without their help, and I organize a booster club, and it's a team effort, just like you guys support the kids. I think our parents also support us, and it's a real good team effort, and when we all stick together, we can do great things. So it's, it was a great season on and off the field, so thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. I'm sure we're gonna open up so that if the Board has anything they would like to share, but I would just like to thank you again for all of your efforts. You also visited the Fountain Academy, Foundation Academy in Trenton and worked with the little ones there. So just a long list of things. I know the football team is just one of the many organizations that do a lot of community service, our marching band, our VPA organizations, our grade levels, kids do work, and all of that was featured in the Hopewell Express this past month. But we just really wanted to invite you all in because we just wanted to give the athletes a shout-out in particular, because sometimes they just see you as players, but you're doing so much more. Is it okay, Bob, if we open up and see if any of the other Board members like to say anything?
Yeah, I'd actually like to say a few words too. Thank you, Coach Caldwell, for representing, bringing out the squad tonight. Thank you, guys, for being here again. You are the pride and joy of our district, and we're so happy for you for having such a great season, and I know it's been a few years to get there as well, so it must, you know, really feel wonderful to have achieved that. But as Coach Caldwell said and as Dr. Treese said, we are especially proud of you for the well-rounded individuals who you are and who you're becoming, and for what you do in our community, and for being strong students as well as athletes, because the student is the part, student athlete, that comes first. So thank you for representing all of the athletics here at Hopewell, but you've truly distinguished yourselves this year, and we congratulate you for your efforts. So thanks for being here. Any other Board members have anything they'd like to mention?
Great season, guys. I filed real close. Anything, and I filed, you guys, I don't even know if you realize, you guys, ten years from now, you're running through each other, and you're still gonna have fun this season. It's so enjoyable. It's a special thing. A great job. And at Hopewell, I've known you for a couple of years now. I think you're awesome. I think, you know, it's a great job, we're telling good coaches, we see other coaches at other schools. You guys are gonna have a lot of fun. We're gonna have it. And even through the pandemic, I watched you get out there and try to get the season. I saw all the stuff you had to do for that. So thank you not only for having an office table for every season, all the stuff that you do, but thank you.
Any other Board members care to comment? Ms. Williams Galliano. If you can get a microphone.
So yeah, I just, everything I think has been said, but I just want you to hear as many voices as possible, that it's great to see that you bring quality to everything you do in the classroom, off the field, with your peers. It means a lot. People look up to you, and you guys bringing it off the field makes a huge difference for everyone, so thank you.
How about one more round of applause for these great guys?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, have a good evening.
Happy holidays.
Have a good evening. I know all of our students are gonna scoot out, and I'm gonna be respectful of everyone's time. I know it's, you know, it is, it is a December night, and there's a lot going on. But I just want to say that throughout the rest of the year, we're going to be featuring students. I did invite other students tonight, and again, it's hard to get everyone in here, but we're gonna spread that out over the next meeting so that we can see a sampling of all our programs and see what the great things our students are doing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, moving right along to something a lot less exciting, the Board's self-evaluation. We are gonna try to wrap this up before the end of the year. It is my goal to get this done before I move on, so I'll be in touch soon once I've compiled the results. If you haven't had the chance to go in there and complete it, please do so. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. And now we will have our first public comment session of the evening.
I am in the clock.
You are in the clock.
Yeah, sorry, my laptop seems to be not being able to hear me. Thank you. Members of the public are invited to address the Board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The Board may also opt to take the matter up, excuse me, at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by District Administration. Feel free to come up to the podium, and please write your name down there as well. Public comment is now open. All right, seeing no participants, we will close public comment and move on. Oh, it's not just me? Okay. It's not just me. That's good to know. All right, so we will move on to consent agenda. I will request a motion that the Board approve the items on consent, the items that are marked by an asterisk. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. We will move on to Bill for his report from Finance and Facilities.
Okey-dokey. So Finance, we met last week, and all of our items are on the consent agenda except for one regarding a donation we received. So can I start out by having a motion to accept an anonymous donation of $1,500 to be used for the boys' and girls' basketball program? All those in favor? Oh, yeah. Yeah, motion first.
Motion.
I know, right?
He's gotten his head about it, guys.
I know. They screwed me up. All right. So now we can vote. Okay. All those in favor of accepting the $1,500?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes. So a couple of the agenda items I wanted to just give some color to. Number six is a resolution to approve the submission of grant projects for a state program that's expected to be authorized shortly. We mentioned this in past meetings, and approving this now gets us in a position so that once the program's announced, we'll be able to submit the projects pretty quickly. We're submitting seven projects. Ultimately, they'll be ranked by the state. We're not exactly sure what the priorities will be or how they'll take them, but our submissions are based on kind of the types of projects that they've considered in the past. And the good news is that anything that we get approved through this program will come off of our long, long list of capital projects that we need to get done in the district. One of the other items is item five, and with the audit coming to an end, we discussed how much we thought we should transfer from the, I'm sorry, to the capital reserve account. You know, we had anticipated earlier depositing up to $2.8 million, and we actually still could do that if we wanted to, but given the economic uncertainty right now, we thought that it would be best to deposit a smaller amount, which is $1.2 million at this time, to transfer to capital reserves. And then the remaining amount of our surplus will be available to us should we need it this year if anything unexpected comes up, and if it doesn't, then we can transfer that amount to the capital reserve later. And then finally, we had some discussion around our subscription and courtesy busing services. The decision for this year on these items has already been made, but we wanted to give a little bit more information to the full Board and to the public on the history of these services, so as if by magic, Bob has a slide. Right there. So to start out with, the cost to transport a student averages $968. That's all schools, all students, all routes, all types of buses. That's the average cost. The state requires us to transport all K through eight students within two miles and all high school students within 2.5 miles from the school. We go a little bit further than that and transport anyone residing within, outside of two miles from the school.
Just a little history on that. The reason why we do two miles is because the high school and middle school use the same buses, and you could potentially have an eighth grader in middle school getting a bus and the high school will not get a bus, so.
Right, right. Going to the same place, right. So courtesy transportation is basically defined as, you know, the students who live within those two miles, if we were to transport those to school, those kids to school, that would be considered courtesy transportation. It's not required, but it's something that we can do, and it's something that we used to do long, long ago and far, far away, up through 2007. Hazardous transportation is similar, well, it's the same range, so it's within those state boundaries, but it's when we pay for transportation for students who otherwise we would not have to pay for transportation, except for there's some sort of hazard in their area in their walk to school. And there's a, there's a long list of, as to what's considered when they look at those hazard, and that's evaluated on a continuing basis, so if something happens, if there's some sort of road closure or something comes up, that can be changed, you know, at any time. The thing that had come up recently was the subscription busing, and this is what has changed this year. In the past, anyone who lives within the courtesy busing area is, we will provide transportation, but we charge the parents for that service. And when it was first implemented and up until this past year, we charged $150 for high school students and $500 for elementary school students. This past year, we decided that we would equalize those amounts and charge $500 for, regardless of it was a high school or an elementary school student. Frankly, there wasn't much of a change between last year and this year, the number of and this year. The number of students who subscribe to this service is, it's not exactly the same. It's a few fewer, I suppose. But I think the point is that at an average cost of $968 per student, we're still subsidizing even at the $500 cost. So, that's the background. We're gonna take this, this will become maybe a larger conversation when the budget is discussed in the coming year, but we wanted to give some background to it prior to that. So, any further questions? Bob can answer them.
Very good summary.
Signing off. Thank you, Bill.
I think Alex has a question.
Alex has a question.
Alex has a question.
Go ahead.
Sure.
Yes, please.
Essentially, it's done with law enforcement. And our, our police, if there's ever a question on hazardous routes, and when the original, and the hazardous routes were determined, they were determined with our, our police department. And they went, we walked a lot of routes, we looked at a lot of routes, and they determined which ones had safe passage and which ones don't. And when we have a question from a member of the public who says, "I believe my, you know, my stop is hazardous, my route is hazardous," we usually call out, you know, an officer, and they go walk the route with us, and they take a look, and they determine whether or not they believe it's hazardous. It's not a, we don't determine that in the vacuum. We use, you know, their expertise regarding that. And that laundry list of items that Bill was referring to is in code. Those are the, that's how the state determines a hazardous route. It can do anything with sight lines, speed on the road, the presence or absence of sidewalks, all of those types of things that determine or make a route hazardous. And that's why we mentioned the 500 versus the 150. The vast reason why the 150 was there is because we were still trying to reduce the amount of subscription buses that we were doing, but we realized that there weren't a plethora of safe routes to the middle school, high school complex. And that's why in 2018, we reinstated hazardous to those locations so that for them, I believe right now that we have given free hazardous transportation to any student who does not have safe passage to school at this point. The board, yes. So, the hazardous routes that we had, we went back and examined all of those routes that had been declared hazardous. And there's a report that we have that we reinstated all of those routes. So that everybody who's not living within, you know, has, does not have a safe passage to school is now being transported.
Bob, follow-on question to that. Like, how frequently do we revisit the list?
I mean, it's reviewed on a continual basis. Usually, once a road is hazardous unless something changes, and this is a rural community, you're, you know, Bear Tavern is, everybody's transported because there really is no safe walking space there. If we were to add, and I know there's been talk with the township, of a safe routes to school grant that would run behind Bear Tavern and walk from backside to the front, if we were to add sidewalks there, it would enable a plethora of kids to be able to walk. So, not only adding transportation, but potentially removing it if necessary. We added transportation. If you notice, if you've ever been to back Timberlane area, there's a roadway that runs from the far corner all the way up to the entrance of Timberlane now. That was added. It gave, gave certain students in that neighborhood safe patches to school. So, that was removed from it. So, as they, you know, as things change, and a lot of this started with the bridge work that was being done. If you remember the bridge work that was done on 31, we added transport. That was the impetus to start to add transportation back. So, they're, they're reviewed on an as-needed basis if we get a call, or if we think, you know, Heather will say, "Hey, they're, they're installing sidewalks here." We ought to think about allowing those students to walk.
Any other questions for Bill or for Bob? All right. Thanks, Bill, for that final report. We will move on to Ms. Grillo for her final report.
Can I have a motion to move the items on the personnel agenda? So, the Personnel Committee met tonight just before this meeting. So, you'll see there's some personnel and ECA appointments on the agenda. There's a number of new hires. There's Dr. Bertell's role as interim principal for HES and his backfill. Some volunteers for the Media Center, substitutes, and then the ECAs are mainly Timberlane Winter Enrichment ECAs. We also talked about a couple of job descriptions tonight that will be for approval for next month, but they are in the agenda for you to review. The first is an executive secretary to the Director of Personnel. So, this is a new job description. This is a position basically that allows the district to recognize secretaries who do work outside the scope of the normal secretary role. So, this is something that we'll vote on next month. And then, we updated an old job description that we've had for some time, Public Information and Community Relations Officer. This is one that's been on the books. But if you remember, Tana's been kind of cycling through all of our job descriptions in the district and updating them where we can. So, this is just an update that included some grants, some advertisement research work, et cetera, added to the job description. And then, negotiations update. So, the CBAs for the HVE SBA and HVASA are included in the agenda for everyone's approval tonight. Yay. So, we will vote on that as part of the roll call. And then, we did talk about at our, I'm looking at you, Bob, Personnel meeting, substitute rates for the custodial and maintenance folks, and, and the group felt like it would, this is an opportune time to look at kind of our, all of our per diem rates in the, in the district in 2023. So, that'll, that'll be something down from Tana. I won't be around for that, unfortunately, so it's the last bit of work that we're giving, that I'm giving to you.
Smoke goes internally now.
So, can I have a roll call, though?
The roll call is on all of the personnel agenda items as we normally do, and then also the CBAs for the negotiations.
Yep.
I mentioned that up front, Alex.
All right. Ms. Jennifer Hazy. Ms. Grillo.
Yes.
Mr. Herbert.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Resnick. Mr. Sewicki.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano. Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Ms. Lindthor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Grillo. Ms. Driver, Education Committee, please.
It sounds really interesting. I'm really curious to see how this moves forward. And I think, I think that, you know, our district, the perfect candidate for this program, all the things that we are already doing, and things are so conscious, are, I think, are yes, what can get involved in it. So, I'm really excited about that. I know I'm not doing it justice. I know it doesn't sound really as cool as it did initially. We also had a presentation from Mr. Stephanop, and I can't talk today. And he gives the review of the class of 2022 and all the things that, the places they had gone or had planned on going and where they ended up at this point in their lives. I'm looking forward to that. This is quite interesting to hear of all the schools that they have applied to and then where they ultimately decided to go. And then, those that weren't taking the route of going to the school, what they were doing. So, we have a nice variation of options for our students and businesses that they landed in. And it's really cool, and I hope we can follow up with them. I know that they plan on doing and have in the past some, like, communities where, like, this past week, incoming students, the present students. So, I, this is rather interesting as well. And then, we also had a conversation about field trips and where the students went to go. Yes, these all sound super interesting. One is this quiet field trip that I think I'm going to vote on tonight, if I remember correctly.
You did?
We did.
Like I said, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Driver. Any questions for Andrea? Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Driver. Community Relations, Mr. Mason's last report.
Um, we went over a couple things. Luckily, like I always say with community relations, usually you're covered by the time you get to the meeting. But we went over, there's gonna be a, we'll have to press a pair for next month. We'll be on the lookout for that. We also went over communications with Dr. Bertell taking over as interim principal with I, thank you for knowing that. I can step in as always. It's not surprising that I stepped up, but thank you. The only issue you're gonna have is at the end of the year, whenever you're gonna kick in here and fucking say. Just so you know, I've known Scott, how long have you been in the company now?
Yeah, quite some time.
So, you're, you're, you're in major work, and you're gonna do awesome there. It's just lucky to have you coming over there. Um, I have support, so I'm gonna take a minute. Thank you to everybody on the board. It's, it's really been, when I joined, like, winning elections, and then it's kind of like, okay, what now? What's this really gonna be like? Right? I ran with Bill, and he was there, and Adam helped me with everything. Just everyone on the board. Deb, I don't know how you did, all the stuff you did, full-time job. There's a new member's gonna want to need it. Just putting it out there now, we're probably, I think we're gonna look at this in there next year. Just saying. That's my opinion. Um, Bob, you know, you do, I don't know how you do what you do. I know you, I think some people look at it, they think you're just plugging it. I know you have sleepless nights, and I know you try to do what's best for this district, and I don't think you get recognized right now. So, I wanted to just take a minute publicly and just say, recognize that, because you really, I, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to be sitting in that chair. You know, awesome guy, like, everyone, like everyone. I can't, I, I think it's, the past couple weeks, awesome, talking about everyone so often, but it's the truth. You have, that's another thing. You deal with personnel, and you get these contracts. It's not easy. You're trying to, it's, it's a balancing act to get what's right for the district and then what's right for the teachers, and you do a fantastic job. Uh, Dr. Grease, I love you. You know, when Dr. Grease, I stepped in, he was, he was awesome. And how, how you're replacing, you never want to be the person to replace him, the person that's been there 11 years. But I'm, I'm not gonna lie, when he called me and said he was leaving, I was upset. And then, my next was, well, I know who I want to replace. It was that simple. And I knew, and when we went through the process and, and we hired you, I knew you were the right choice, and you exceeded my expectations as always, and it doesn't surprise me. But thank you for everything you do. Thank you for what you've done for my company. And just thank you for what you do for the community. I don't think people in this community, I'm not saying I don't think, you know, I, you know, I see other schools, I've seen other, I pay attention to boards, and my, my family's district, and they, I see how they are. The administration here, the community should realize how lucky they are to have you guys. I thought my job was easy on the board. We said, "Yeah, we want this done." Then it got done. And the selflessness and what, what the administrative team does for the community, can't, I can't stress it enough. I kind of got the key behind the curtain by being on the board. And I, you know, you don't know what you're gonna walk into. It's an act, and it's, it's, thank you all. I just wanted to say that. And I enjoyed my time on the board. I'm moving. I don't know if I would ran it. It does take a lot of time, but I, I'm moving to Philly, but hopefully it has a special place in my car for, for my kids' wonderful school. And thank you, and I can, and this is why, this is the team that's there. So, thank you, and I, I can take, I can be off my own path. We can get this done.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Any questions? All right, Ms. Galliano-Williams, SEL Committee.
I know. I don't know. A lot to follow. So, we had a excellent meeting on the 7th of December for SEL. And, you know, you think that you've kind of gotten the year on lock, but there's still more that this, that Paulette and Beth and the district are doing in this area. In particular, we've talked a lot about Character Strong rolling out in January, and it is being used throughout the district. Some of, a lot of the teachers have embraced it, given a lot of very, very positive feedback. Ryan Single has come on board and, and is already reaching into classrooms using Character Strong. And, and, you know, he's also, as he's doing this, become very busy. He's hitting every building in the district. And what we want to do, given such positive feedback and as we launch fully officially in January, is to follow that with a survey to parents and students, really to get a sense that is all of the positive vibes and energies that we're getting from staff and teachers translating to students and families as the kids kind of take home the, the lessons for the day. And just mostly because we think it's great, and we want to make sure it's doing what we think it's doing. So, we'll look forward to getting more statistics around Character Strong. And also, Ryan Single, woo-hoo, we need more of him. So, we also, to that regard, really talked about the budget for the retroposition, whether we could have additional time and resources in this area. In particular, our discussion really was, how do we bring, especially in the next two to three years, more resource to a space where we know kids are struggling in space of mental health, and really recognizing that those folks also, when they're not well, our entire body's not well, right? Like, they have peers that are worried and concerned for their well-being. So, we really want to assess, and we're already getting statistics on services and how much they're being used and how they're being used. So, this will be another data-driven decision on how and where we put the resources from an SEL perspective. Also, there is an upcoming mental health first aid program. There are three sessions coming up. I don't know that we discussed the dates of those in particular. I don't know that we discussed the dates of those in particular, but the, a large number of staff have requested the training and they did, almost 40, I think we had, participate in the first one. So that's also kind of a message of concern and engagement from our staff, which is awesome. On December 6th, really fun activity is National Disability Awareness Day. We had a few folks doing a read-along or, and we had not a ton of participation, but I think it's one of those things that's really important to do regardless of the participation, that we take the time to spend time with our families. So that happened and we appreciate those that took the time out of their day to not only participate but read. And let's see. And I just mentioned that kind of data question was the other reason we talked about. So that is all for us.
Thank you, Anita. Any questions for Anita? And Mr. Sewicki with policy.
Okay. Well, I know you're all disappointed, but we don't have any items up for first reading. You know, there is a rationale, right? It's that the new incoming board, you know, start fresh. So, so what we did instead, two weeks ago, Ms. Riley from the high school came in and we talked about policy and regulation 5538, the random testing for alcohol and other drugs. And you know, just to put it in perspective, Dr. Smith implemented the program a couple of years ago with, you know, long extensive coordination with the board, you know, brought in for a variety of reasons, you know, one of which was to, you know, if anything, to provide students a reason not to partake, right? That was part of the rationale. So we put the policy in place. It stood as is for a couple of years now, but Ms. Riley came back and mentioned some things about what we found over the last couple of years. You know, we do get positive tests and basically there's an outlined set of procedures that occurs afterwards. Part of it is coordination with Dr. Gellerman, our school counselor. And one of the reasons for the discussion is just, it does make for a high case load for him. And the question is, is it the most value-added thing we can do with this time? So based upon that, you know, we've also had some changes in terms of legality of marijuana in the state since this was enacted. But based upon all this, you know, we had some good discussion and the direction was for the administration to go back, look at our policy, make some recommendations to the board to look at coming forward in the spring when the new boards are in place. So that'll be one thing we do. The intention would be to implement it for the following school. Okay. Now, we do have some items up for second reading, so if I can get a motion to move the items up for second reading, please. Okay, we have, let's see, policy 2415.04, Title I, District Parent Family Engagement, policy and regulation 2425 for emergency virtual remote instruction program, policy 2210 for curriculum development, and regulation 8420.1 fire and fire drills. So we discussed these last month, no changes since that time, so we're just recommending them for approval.
Ms. Grillo.
Yes.
Mr. Herbert.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes.
Ms. Sewicki.
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Yes.
Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Ms. Jenavacy.
Yes.
Ms. Lindthorst.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Sewicki. Board calendars, looking at January now, right? We're all done for December.
Essentially what we're going to do is we'll probably hold on setting any dates until whoever your successor sets committees and we move forward based upon the schedules of the new members, so.
Okay.
But yeah, we should approve it, just approve it.
Yes. Yes. So I'll request a motion that the board approve, the December and January calendars attached. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.
I'm sorry you're going to have to miss the rose bowl.
Sorry about that.
One second.
Paul promised to move quickly through the ethics presentation. I don't know if we have any items of new business to bring before the board, but in our, in our haste to get to the football team recognition, Dr. Trese and I did not allow for other board members or others to comment if they would choose, you know, regarding our three departing members.
I do, I just want to say that I'm very proud of you. Before I started, I didn't really understand the level of effort required, not only of board members, but especially the president with all the leaders and all the coordinators and the president. But even more so, you do this very, you know, after working here.
You worked. There was a lot of work.
For the last three years, I mean, I really can't stress how impressed I am with the level of dedication and the level of effort that you have to have. You guys really, you know, like Tom said, you know, when Tom left, you know, I was sad that Tom left, but you know, he came in and he lived up to what he had. I think people in the community and on the board itself, you know, can disagree about some of the things that we do, the priorities we place in different areas, but no one can, no one can question the commitment that the administration here has to put schools in the district and help the community. So as a resident of HopeWell Township since 2009, and as soon as a former board member, I'd like to thank you guys.
Thank you, Bill. I won't belabor anything that John and Bill have already said, but I echo their sentiments. I'm a, I'm a fangirl for this administration and I tell anyone that I meet about that. I mean, truly, it's been enjoyable for the most part. We might not always agree, but it's fun largely, even like the really long nights and stuff. So I appreciate that. And I think what's most important to me right now is just to recognize that, you know, John, Bill and I are very public servants to the district, but there are so many other people in this community that help run this district and give us much time and energy and effort. And that's really, I think, what sets this district apart. So I want to recognize those folks as well.
Thank you, Jess. Any other members with comments?
Anita. So the timekeeper, the parliamentarian, and the always seconder. You will deeply, deeply be missed. I, everything Deb said and Dr. Trese said, of course. But when you step onto the board, your first meeting, you're staring at all the faces, you're going, am I going to get along with these people? Am I going to disagree with these people? There hasn't been one moment after that first meeting that I've worried about coming to some agreement with any of you, either of you. It's been a joy. I will miss you all very, very deeply, especially the parliamentarian, because policy was my first committee and I felt like it grounded me and I really, really appreciated your sense of calm and certainty about how to kind of walk through the policies. And genuinely, it really gave me a sense of, okay, I get how this works and we're going to be okay. So I will miss you, Jess, on personnel and Bill and John. I always trust that you have the kids at heart, so. So if I come dragging you out of your homes and putting you in some room here, I've committed to locking a few of you up for next year. I just thank you immensely.
I'd just like to make, I'm not going to belabor, I think there's a lot of, been a lot of good discussion already, but I'm going to hit one key point, I think, just having sat on the board for a while, for the three of you, at least the first couple of years when I was on the board, we didn't have a huge amount of turnover. And there's been a lot recently. And what I'll say is compared to like some prior folks on the board, you three were brought into having to take some responsibility as committee leaders and such very early in your time on the board. So I'll give you credit for stepping up to that and doing an outstanding job. Especially given that you were having to deal with it during the pandemic in a way which none of us had ever envisioned before. So congratulations and thank you for your service.
Well said.
And I'm going to thank the four of you for your service as board secretary. You all made it a joy to work with because you showed a genuine interest in listening and learning about what we were trying to tell you. It wasn't taking it out of our word for it. There were questions that were asked that were poignant and made us think about what we did. And we changed a lot of our thoughts and how we did things on your recommendations. It goes for all you board members, but especially like as Adam said, you came on in a difficult time with change and you guys had to take leadership roles right away. And it was, it was very much appreciated. Bill, especially you being my chair for a few years and really digging into and trying to understand the quagmire that is school financing in New Jersey. Again, thank you all for your service.
Now, is Debbie going to come back and we get to give her a plaque?
We're going to give her a plaque.
Yes, 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 absolutely.
We'll be bringing Debbie back.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, 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 no.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Everyone have their opportunity to, oh, Andrea.
And I knew that when I got here that I was among the, we got one of the same levels of excellence. Even though you weren't here. And so I totally appreciate all of the effort you guys have given to this, you know, you have served, you know, and helped me in the excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did speak very generally of our administrators, but I don't know how. First of all, first and foremost, Tana is a force to be reckoned with. I mean, what you've done in this last year or two is just beyond, you inspire me, seriously. The energy and the talent and the drive that you bring to that every day is truly amazing. So thank you for keeping us, not only keeping us afloat, but really keeping us in that, at that level of excellence in all of our staffing. And of course, I would say, I would have comments for Vicky and Paulette today as well if they were here and Scott as the newest member, but keeping everyone in line here. We appreciate what you've done at this level as well and look forward to seeing the great things you'll do over at HopeWell for us. So thank you. Bud Bob, our board secretary, keeping me in line these last three minutes has not been easy all of the time. And I really do appreciate all that you've done and the humor that you bring to it and the support that you've given is, you know, immeasurable. So thank you. All right. And that's it for new business.
We're very old business.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Our second public comment period. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open. Public comment is now closed. And I will request a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the following items. An employee matter, and that is all we have this month, correct?
No. What?
No.
The time didn't touch away. We have nothing left.
Yeah.
Motion?
No, no action will be taken.
Action may be.
Oh, action may be taken. I apologize. Action may be taken. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.